Uh, Rep Yangtamei? Yeah. Oh, and... No, Dinita Yangtamei. Yeah. Oh, wait.
In the summer?
Uh, Tina, no, Yangtamei. I don't know if Ivan was on this one. I can't remember.
Okay. Good afternoon, and thank you everyone for coming to the Saipan and Northern Islands Legislative Delegation, Public Hearing for the Zoning Committee, the Committee on Zoning. We are here today at February 26th. Sorry, wrong date. I was thinking of the weekend already. Sorry, guys. It is February 22nd, 2022. Uh, it is 5:07 PM, and we are going to begin the public hearing now. Thank you all for coming. I would like to begin by introducing the members that are here today along with the LB staff who are assisting with this public hearing. To my left, we have the Vice Chair, Representative Tina Sablon. To my right, I have Representative Joel Camacho. And further on to the right is Representative JP Sablon. Not present at this moment is Representative Dinita Yangtamei. Joining us from the LB Legislative Bureau are Legal Counsel Brendan Layd, IT and Streaming, Mr. Delbert Camacho, Legislative Assistant Cameron Nicholas, and Sergeant-at-Arms John Santos. Thank you all for coming, and to the members of the public who have come today for this zoning committee public hearing. This is the first one of ever being held for the zoning committee. There was never a zoning committee until this recent House of Representatives and delegation. And so, this is our first meeting as a public hearing. Our two bills up for public comments today are House Local Bill 22-13 to amend Section 403 of the Saipan Zoning Law of 2013 as amended to allow for concrete hollow block manufacturing for conditional use within village commercial zones and for other purposes. We will also be hearing comments from House Local Bill Senate Draft 122-22 to amend Table 1 under Section 404 of the Saipan Zoning Law of 2013. Oh, Substitute 1. Forgive me. House Local Bill Substitute 122-22 to amend Table 1 under Section 404 of the Saipan Zoning Law of 2013 as amended to allow for auto rental, including service for rental vehicles for conditional use in village residential zoning districts and for other purposes. We will begin today with House Local Bill 22-13. And so, we open the floor to any members of the public who are here today to give their comments. You may stand over here at the podium where our excellent Sergeant-at-Arms Santos is. And please tell us your name and your comments on the bill. If you have your comments written, we would like to collect them after. We would like to ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. And if you wish for additional time, just let us know and we can consider it. Thank you. And I begin with opening the floor. I hope you all have copies of the bills. Thank you. Please make sure you tell us your full name.
Thank you, Chairwoman. My name is Roman Cepeda Benaventi. I come into this meeting because I was made aware of the bills that was... that are being trying to be amended. I know, and it's good that the Director or the Director of Zoning is here. And I'd like to share some thoughts with regards to this bill because I was one of the guys that took part in this, uh, passing the bill of the zoning law in the past. And, uh, you know, let me just say it this way. We passed that bill, the law, in order for us to better our community. So we can have a good setback and a good variance for whatever the case may be when we have a homestead and stuff like that. If we are... if we are really, uh, if we really care for this, this type of, uh, project, I think, you know, we also, and I'm referring to, uh, House Bill, House Local Bill 22-13, which is basically, uh, a bill that has a designated industrial site already in Tanapak. We have that, uh, bill already that is designated as far as zoning is concerned. Another thing is that... I've seen some of the people that are around here. I'm also part of the neighborhood around that area. And I've seen some of the, really, a very close proximity from the intended place to be built. I know that exact place is just not too far from the road, and it's not too far from the actual runway. It's actually near to Mr. Ramon Del Cruz, former congressman, also Ramon Del Cruz. And it is near to his residence. And with that, I am, I am also concerned because Guangdong was offered, what you call that? A place down in Sablon Construction. A grandfathered, uh, uh, block plan that was down in Effetna. But unfortunately, they decided to, maybe it's a, an economic type situation. That's why they chose to build it up there in the proximity also for Guangdong. And the intended block plan to be built is, uh, is a very close proximity also. So, in essence, it saved them to, you know, it saved them time and it saved them money to operate within that area. But although, you know, that is, uh, an area where we have to really consider it because, as, as you know, there are areas over there at Escondo that is already, uh, set aside for homestead. I know the GPPC is just also right next to it. The GPPC, a compound warehouse and equipments offices. It's just right next to it, so... But that is a grandfathered program too that they have. They build that prior to, to the law, the zoning law that was passed. And, uh, Representatives, all of you, honorable Representatives, I, I have nothing really against it, you know, but, on the same token, you know, we want to see our future, how we like to see our island progress in the future. And it's not really for me, but at least for our future generation. So, when we have a designated area, when we have a designated area, we tend to, to, you know, and I, I know that too because, you know, I'm also one of the representatives that take part in this. And I've seen it, how, how things work, you know, especially with the Saipan delegation. But, we have to let the... we have to let the, the... we have to let the zoning, uh, office. We have to let the zoning office to be the one to basically look upon this because there are provisions in there that restricts other, other area. But at the same time, if we're going to, to continue amending this, what do we have in the future? I mean, you know, as far as the concern is about. I have nothing to the, nothing against the intention. The intention is good. It will serve also a lot of people, uh, a lot of, uh, families, you know, building their houses and whatnot around that area. And that, that really would help, uh, the people. But it's within the scope of the law already. And I think, you know, it's good that the Director is here for zoning. And I hope that she get the message of, of what we're trying to point out. On, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Benaventi.
Other than that, I would say, thank you. I would, other, I, other than that, I would say thank you very much for the opportunity that you, you know, were able to express our feelings and our concern. Thank you, all of you members.
Thank you, Mr. Benaventi. If you have your written comments, you can give it to the Sergeant-at-Arms and he can collect it.
I don't have written comments because I was...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was just letting you know and give it to me.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you so much. If, uh, comments are still open? Oh, yes. And now that, uh, we have a break in the moment, we'd also like to recognize Representative Dinita Yangtamei. Thank you for joining us.
Okay, guys. Honorable Representative, I thank you so much for allowing the general public to, to comment on this proposed change on the zoning law. First of all, you know, 5 o'clock? We're just getting out of work. Have to run around like crazy just to be making it here at 5 o'clock. It just, it's not fair. If you want to hear us, give us time. Give us at 5:30 maybe?
Point taken. If you could tell us your name, please?
My name is Ramon C. Dela Cruz. I live about 150 feet from that fencing that the proposed, uh... that, that it's now been proposed for a change on the zoning law. I don't understand. I think those folks that had established the zoning law had pretty much had it all sorted out, figured out. And I think their intention on not allowing, uh, concrete, anything with concrete. I know that sheet metal and things of that are authorized and so forth, but concrete. My lot, like I said, about 100, 130 miles, 30 feet away from the fencing of the compound that they intend to, that they have a prefab building that they intend to use to build or to manufacture hollow block or cinder block. So, it's not just myself. My six siblings are also within that area. Down the line, Toot Tootville, they're, they're pretty much right there. They're in the prevailing wind as well as my property. But if it's not the noise, it's going to be those trucks that are going in and out to deliver and pick up loads of finished products. So if you live next to a heavy equipment traffic, you know, just imagine, on a daily basis, how many trucks are going in to unload the materials for the product to be manufactured? How many loads are going out? It's not just going to be a full load of so much that it's going to diminish the number of loads going in or going out. They're going to do it as orders are coming in. I understand Guangdong is right down towards the traffic light on Monsignor Guerrero and Asperdido Road. So it's a convenience for them, I guess, is simply put because it's much closer to their retail store. But for the folks that are going to be living there day in, day out for the rest of their lives, that's my concern. And that's one, me, I'm my, myself is one of them, as well as my siblings and their kids. And then Toot Tootville. And if there is going to be another plan of, uh, public land to be utilized for homesteads or to be built and leased out to folks that will be needing public land, I mean, homesteads, uh, they're going to be right there. Toot Tootville is one classic example. The prevailing wind is always going to be from a northeasterly down south. And it's day two, we'll be getting all that noise. I don't know what kind of noise. I don't know the machines. It's supposed to be inside the prefab building. But the trucks and all of that is going to be my show, day in, day out. As of, as a matter of fact, at the very moment, simply the traffic on Asperdido Road, that's what we hear every day. Luckily that we have bamboo in the front, so that is, it buffers the sound and the noise of traffic. But that's okay. I took it upon ourselves to, to build a house there, and that's where we're at. But to continually adding on and adding on additional more of either manufacturing or other things, other activities and enterprises, that's going to, it's, it's just not right. That's coming from me. And I think I'm speaking on behalf of my siblings that are here. Some of them are not here, they're off island. And I think that's it from me. So my position on this is very straightforward. Keep it to APL, in post, uh, area of particular concerns, APC, and areas that are already now being saturated with all kinds of activities, including block manufacturing. Thank you so much. Again, working for, I work for the mayor's office. I get off at 4:30. It would be nice if the public hearings for all kinds of things could be set, not at 5 o'clock. Because people that are working for the private sector, I believe they get off at 5, they can't make it here. We started almost on time. So they're never going to be. So if we're blocking them, their thoughts and everything else, that's the way to go. But if it's not, my suggestion is to move the time backwards.
Thank you, Representative Dela Cruz. Mr. Dela Cruz, thank you for your, your feedback. Note taken, about 5:30. Any future public hearings that I host, I will definitely keep that into consideration. All right, the, um, floor is still open. We are discussing House Local Bill 22-13 to amend Section 413 of the Saipan Zoning Law of 2013 to amend, as amended, to allow for concrete hollow block manufacturing for conditional use within commercial village zones and for other purposes. Please.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman and members of this committee. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share comments on the legislation that is before your committee for consideration. I've given, uh, my name is Geraldine Dela Cruz. I am currently the zoning administrator. And I provided comments for this bill when it was first introduced. But I'd like to be given the opportunity to share the comments again today, as well as in front of everybody that's present here. Good afternoon, Chairwoman and members of this committee. I am here to provide comments in opposition to the House Bill 22-13, which is on, which is on the agenda for, for today's public hearing. The content in the proposed legislation is something that is not new to the Commonwealth Zoning Board. We have had an applicant that has lobbied to allow a hollow block plant in a village commercial zone. Here are the facts. On August 6th, the Zoning Board had a public hearing for a hollow block plant categorized as manufacturing and processing in a village commercial zone district. The Commonwealth Zoning Board determined that a hollow block plant produces cement products. Therefore, the Saipan Zoning Law only allows for this use in an industrial zone district. So allow me to explain the purpose of a village commercial zone and one of an industrial. Industrial zones protect and promote economic development by reserving and protecting areas that have particular suitability for industry while controlling effects on adjoining communities. Village commercial zones are intended to provide basic commercial services to adjoining residential communities and accommodates low to medium density residential development. Development in this district is intended to be compatible with the pedestrian and family-friendly character of nearby residential neighborhoods. Typical uses are laundromats, mom and pop stores, medical clinics, schools, parks. Now, imagine having a hollow block plant in your backyard. Residents in the Escondo area who were present in the public hearing have come out publicly opposing this type of development. These residents are in a village commercial zone where their homes are as close as 100 feet away, as we've heard earlier tonight. That's like, you know, maybe this front door to the next building. They've expressed concerns of noise and emissions, possible health hazards, peace and quiet, negative effect on their neighborhood. The Commonwealth Zoning Board, whom this body entrusted to carry out and administer the Saipan Zoning Law, have done so by not allowing this in a village commercial zone because it's not allowed. The law does not allow for it. Passing this legislation would allow hollow block near Mount Carmel Cathedral. Mount Carmel Cathedral is in a village commercial zone. So if this legislation is passed, which allows hollow block plant in a village commercial zone, then anybody can just build it right behind Mount Carmel School or Mount Carmel Church. And also, House Local Bill 22-13 states that there might be inadequate local supply of concrete hollow blocks. And therefore, in order to prevent purchasing outside the CNMI, that this legislation needs to be passed. That's the first I've heard. I, I, there's, has been no construction company that has come up and said that there's a shortage of hollow blocks in, in the CNMI. So, um, I don't know, I, I choose, I prefer on that one. We all know that there's no shortage. So, again, let's keep it in industrial zones. If we need to rezone and create more industrial areas to accommodate, you know, this for shortage in supply, then maybe that's the route to go. But I asked this, I asked this humble body to please reconsider this legislation in front of you. Again, Chairwoman and members, thank you very much.
Thank you, Administrator Dela Cruz, for your comments. The floor is still open for House Local Bill 22-13. Thank you for your comments. Last call for public comments. Okay. Thank you, sir. Please tell us your name. For the record.
Yeah, my name is Martin Castro, Martin Babalta Castro. I, I was the consultant for the Guangdong Hardware during the time of the application submitted to the zoning board. And the confusion here is that when we were originally applied for the hollow block plan there, it was classified as the, as a conditional use permit. Okay? So we went ahead and paid the application fee and then the administrator scheduled a zoning board, I mean, a meeting, a public hearing. And even, I recall, like the director said, that, um, it couldn't be approved at that time for the reason that there's, um, a slight misunderstanding why there was a public hearing where the regulation was not really explicit enough for the zoning board to act on the matter. So it was, it was suspended, you know, not disapproved at the time. It was put on hold. And that was clear that night that the zoning board did not have the jurisdiction at the time to make a decision. So it was unanimously, you know, kind of like put on hold, suspended. Later after that, we, I gathered that the only way I would help my client was to go back to the legislature and, you know, amend the gray area of the, of the regulation to allow such an activity within, yeah, village commercial. So, um, the illusion there was that, why gone to that far? And then the zoning board would say that, um, uh, we don't have the jurisdiction. That was really something, um... I would assume that time maybe that even weren't for the, um, the testimonies by the neighborhood, that probably the project would have been approved based on the fact that they already made two, three steps up forward and scheduled a public hearing. You know? If had, if, if the administrator at the time and their staff already knew that it shouldn't be in the, under the conditional use permit, then we shouldn't have gone that far to have a public hearing. So the tip is to go back to the legislature, to the legislature, and try to amend the law to clarify that such a small hollow block plan and all the environmental, environmental issues would be, what we call it, address, such as doing it indoors, reduce the noise, schedule it on a non-busy traffic, that would probably allow it. That, but so then, that's how the, the bill came about before you, um, members of the legislature. So I would just like to clarify that, okay? And I thank you very much if you, you know, giving me the opportunity to make the short justification. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Public comments are still open. Sorry that the doors make really, they're very noisy when they open. I think we have a ghost. Thank you, Cam. All right, last call for public comments for House Local Bill 22-13 regarding the concrete hollow block manufacturing. Okay. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, um, board members. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here as a support of this amendment for, for some reasons.
Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Herman Sablon. And like I said, I'm here for, to support this bill because I see the positive side of it and how we help our people in terms of construction needs, price control, stability, price stability. I understand, I came in a little bit late because I thought that this hearing is 5:30. And I understand there are my, actually my families who lives right next to the, to the proposed site. And I did met with him one time and explained that this, um, hollow block processing plant is going to be indoor. It'll be insulated. There'll be no, you won't see any dust flying in the air because it's going to be all indoor process. It's a small scale plant, and I think it will benefit the surrounding communities. The reason why I'm not the representative for Guangdong, Mr. Castro is. I'm only concerned about the clarity of the law. And in my statement that I submitted, I congratulated this 22nd legislature for having established the, the body, zoning, apart from the zoning office. So it can have a concentration on fixing and building, clarifying laws, updating laws, and providing proper laws as we evolve in our policies and, you know, to meet our environmental needs. Let me put it that way. So, I'm curious because we have three hollow block plants right now. And they're all in the village commercials. None of them are industrial plants, I mean, industrial area. So either we clarify that, recertify those three hollow block plants, and those three hollow block plants are all open air. Okay? They're close to neighborhoods, they're close to houses. But this hollow block plan that the Guangdong, and the reason why Guangdong is pushing that is because we shop there all the time, a lot of customers go there because they used to operate hollow block plan at Effetna. The typhoon destroyed it. And I support businesses, and I understand those who oppose it because it affect the business, right? But I support businesses and let's treat them fairly. Guangdong has been supplying CNMI and Saipan with the material needs. And as I explained to Ray before, this facility is to replace the facility in San Antonio. They've been doing hollow block plants there also. I mean, manufacturing hollow blocks. They just want to move closer to the hardware store because it's easier, less maintenance, and it will control the price. So we have to consider also Guangdong's needs to put the facility closer so the supply line and the distribution is close to the main store. So I look at this from this point. So when I heard the plan, I researched, I asked them, Guangdong, what kind of facility? Because it is a sensitive issue. And I will want also a plan right beside my house. But this plan they create, they created is a state-of-the-art facility, and it has a fence around it. In fact, we saw the boundary where the residents right beside it. And that we identified. And they assured me that there will be hollow block fence to control additional environmental issues for the residents beside it. So the trucks moving in and out is like a short path. You will go into the facility, facility closed, they unload, and then they move out. That's the way they explained it to me. And it should be a conditional, so this will be enforced. So like I said again, let's treat the business. Look at it, how the community will respond or receive this kind of benefits, and also how we can protect the, you know, address the concerns of the citizens right beside the plant. And I think they have addressed that. So again, this is not a new plan that they're trying to be on Saipan. This is to replace the old plan destroyed by the super typhoons. So, board members and, I mean, yeah. The board members. So I ask you to look at it and see how and what type of benefits both the residents beside it and, you know, considering also the sensitivity with the neighbors. And I did talk to Ray before, and I took his concern, brought it to the companies just to help out because really, we need this. Guangdong continued to supply us with the material that we need. Especially, we have homes coming up all the time and renovations. Thank you, and I'm sorry to take up your time.
Thank you for giving us your comments, Mr. Sablon.
Thank you.
I'm much appreciated. Public comments are still open. Did you want to come up still for the first round? You were on your way. Thank you so much. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Lourdes Sanchez. And my property is like maybe 50 to 75 feet only from the proposed area. And also, the road going to their place is just in front of my property. And if I have to build a house there, I have a siblings, I have a daughter that's have a health problem. I know that if they do the hollow block or whatever, they said it's going to be indoor only. I don't think so. Maybe some of the dust will go out. And being so close to it, it's going to affect me and my kids because it's right there. The road is just in front of me. And actually, like, the proposed place is just my next door. So it's very close. Even if they're going in and out, maybe it doesn't matter, but with the dust, unless they concrete everything, but still, the cement or whatever, it's going to come out of the building. It's not going to stay in the building. It's going to escape. And I don't think it's a safe. And plus, if there's a commercial area, why don't they go to the commercial area? Because there are already residential over there. Plus, we're just starting to, we're just starting to build our place up there. So like, for me, it's like less than 70 feet because my brother is like 100, and I'm next to him. And my property is here. The road is just in front of me. And then there's that, their plant. So I don't know, because if it's a store or anything else, but maybe it's okay because the store, it's going to, you know, benefit us too. But when it comes to the concrete, the hollow blocks, I think they better go somewhere, you know, farther. Plus, it's not really a demand because there are other hollow blocks thing. I don't know if we ever encountered a shortage of hollow blocks, but there are hollow blocks all over, I think. That's not over there because for me, I think, yeah, if it's another kind, but not the concrete, not the hollow blocks. Because I don't know if we're going to, if it's going to be a lot of noise or what, but, you know, with the passing of the cars and everything, it's just right in front of me. No escape. It's enough with like, I have other problems inside my property. So I'm really asking for your help to help us up there. Because now that we have the land, we can build our place, our house up there. Now we're going to encounter this. This is very big for me. It's not like a store or like they said laundry mat or what, but, you know, hollow blocks is not the kind of neighbor we want. So please try to help us too. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sanchez. Public comments are still open for House Local Bill 22-13. Before we start round two, is there anybody else for round one? Last call? Okay. So thank you so much for giving additional comments, Mr. Beneventi, round two.
Thank you. Just to enlighten the members, to all of you honorable, I'd just like to say that I know the other block plans that are around the islands are previously grandfathered, under grandfathered operation. So just a kind recommendation to zoning, you know, to avoid all these issues with regards to people who are continuing to to ask to compromise the existing provisions of the zoning law. I would like to ask the administrator that maybe to include on their provisions, on their policies, and maybe give and put time to those existing operators that are on island that are still operating. And maybe relocate them to, also to the industrial site. So there will be fairness, there will be equity among the business, among the business propositions, among everybody. So there is a designated area, and that's all I, that's all I, I like to share with you. And when you come into the House Bill, I mean, the House Local Bill, the other House Local Bill, 22-13, I mean, 22-22, I would like to also make a comment with regards to that.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for the opportunity again.
Absolutely. Thank you for giving us additional information and for the recommendation. Public comments still open for House Local Bill 22-13. Last call? Okay. Thank you all for your patience and for your comments for the first House Local Bill of 22-13. We will move on now to House Local Bill Substitute 1, 22-22, to amend Table 1 under Section 404 of the Saipan zoning law of 2013 as amended to allow for auto rental, including service for rental vehicles, for conditional use in village residential zoning districts and for other purposes. Public comments are open. Did you want to give public comments for 22-22, Mr. Beneventi? Thank you.
Again, committee members and every one of you guys that are here today, it's not that I'm against, I'm against development. And I'm, you know, I'm in support of development. And I want to see the economy move ahead as far as what we need to have here on the island. On the other, and the other proposal, you know, to also to amend the same provisions, I see this as a very much challenge too because there are areas that are already that's been restricted and doing so, but people still compromise the law with regards to the enforcement. And with this, I would just honestly say that the building that was erected or constructed way back, it was made for an auto shop to be, you know, to be used to facilitate fixing, fixing cars, the broken cars and everything in and out of that area. As far as the rental car that's supposed to be attached to it, there was another, there was another person across, which is the, what's his name? Owned by a Philippine lady. It was Marfala or something, the company. And they've been operating rent-a-car over there. I don't know if they stock the rent-a-cars over there or they put them or they put them at the airport. But if they are putting them at the airport, then, you know, that's basically what it's really needed to do because they don't have the exact area over there. And that's considered a village commercial, so I mean, village commercial, right? So with that, I think I would honestly say that let the zoning administrators and everyone do for the sake of, again, for the sake of fairness and to everybody. And if there was any existing grandfathered businesses that are supposed to be doing like this that contradicts the law, I would like to say that, again, I recommend this to the administrator to make this inclusive into their regulations and stuff like that. But basically, that's, I have nothing against it. I have nothing against the company that are trying to do their business and everything. It's just that the hurts and the comments of the different people. And I only, I will be fair with you when it comes to, for example, Guangdong. The proximity of my house, my residential area with Guangdong, and I'll tell you, when that semi-lower comes in to unload the materials and everything, it's, we have noise pollution up there. We do have noise pollution, but we, you know, I survive it and I tolerate it because it's been there for a long time. But other than that, to do a block plan somewhere in the adjacent area, I would say better we correct before we continue. We better we correct with not to allow the continuation of making mistakes, you know, and against the law to go against the provision. So I would say that let's correct it and let's move ahead with that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Beneventi.
Thank you, Chairwoman and Tina. Thank you very much. And all of you guys, Representative Joelle, Representative Jampu, and Representative Yantamay, thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to express my feeling. Thank you.
Public comments are still open for House Local Bill Substitute 22-22. Last call for comments. House Local Bill Substitute 1, 22-22. Okay. It appears that all the public comments for today's meeting have been given. And so from there, I will adjourn this meeting. If you have any additional public comments in writing that you'd like to give, you are welcome to reach out to me, and I can share it with the committee. If there's anybody online that would like to submit committee or submit comments to this committee because you were not able to attend, please feel free to email me or reach out to me on social media so that I can collect your public comments as well. And to all the members of the LB team and members of this committee, thank you so much for your times. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Do we need to?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, it's my first public hearing. All right, there's been a motion. It's been seconded. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Please, please take some food to go. We have a lot of food to take home to your families. Thank you so much for coming out this evening.